So, we do not support candidates. We do support issues though. And we're pleased to be able to present forums so that people get to meet the candidates and ask questions that they find important to them. I'd also like to thank Scott Hampenly here for being our videographer. My man sat right. This is being videotaped. It will be on our Facebook page and on our website. So if people missed and you know friends who want to listen in, they can go on there and listen. It's actually being streamed live on our Facebook. All right. I'd like to introduce Shannon Burns, who is our moderator today. Thank you.
I'm Shannon Burns. I'm from the Wheaton League of Women Voters. The League is carefully nonpartisan and when we do forums like this, moderators who do not live in the community cannot vote for the candidates and don't know the issues are usually invited to moderate. So I'm here as impartial as it's possible to be. I'd like to start by asking you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in indivisible and with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Candidate forums such as this one, this is a sole event of the League of Women Voters of Glen Allen. The League does however frequently partner with other organizations. However, the League is a carefully and rigidly nonpartisan organization that gives the general public an opportunity to participate in the electoral process by asking questions of the candidates about issues that concern the community. This is a terrific opportunity to promote civil civic discourse and I encourage you to ask your questions of the candidates. The way the question asking works is this. You take your words out of your hair and pull down your arm, write them on the card. And then you raise your hand, someone will take them over here and give them to a four out of women that I don't know. And they will sort them and they give them to me. So by the time they get to me, they've been sorted to weed out repetition. We don't allow personal attacks on candidates or issues that focus more on one candidate than another. We try to keep it with just issues. So the questions have been sorted by the time they get to me, but I will remind you periodically to, if you have questions, make sure they get asked by writing them down and raising your hand. I'd like to thank the candidates for participating and you for attending. If you can hold your applause until the end, we will have a great opportunity to give them a rollicking good thank you for being here today. All candidates listed by the Election Commission for this particular race were invited and all of them chose to participate. I'd like to take a minute to just thank the volunteers of the Glen Allen League of Women Voters for putting this on for everyone today. This race is for School Board 41. And there are, School Board District 41, there are five candidates for four open positions on the board. When you look at the ballot when you go to vote, which you all are going to do, right? Yes. Okay. When you go to vote, it will say vote for four. You can vote for one, or two, or three, or four. You can only vote once for each one, but you don't have to vote for four. You can vote for as many as you want up to four. And if you want to just vote for one, you can do that. A little bit of ballot verification. The way this will work today is our candidates each get a two-minute opening. We have a timekeeper here who has big bright panels that will be raised. The candidates will each get a two-minute chance to introduce themselves. They'll do that from the podium. Then we will be asking questions that candidates will get one minute to answer as they go on. We don't have a mic today. If you in the back can hear a candidate, just raise your hand and that will be a clue to the candidates to speak up. The time limit is one minute for questions. I will let the candidates add a few extra words at the end to finish the sentence and then I'll just be rude and start talking over them. I want to let you know that it's League policy to time these, to strict time limits, and the candidates have been alerted to that. Okay, let's get started. Our first introduction today will be Ms. Dan Brozio.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank again the League of Women Voters for...
Yeah, speak up. Talk louder.
For organizing this forum. I think it's important service to provide to the voters so they can make informed decisions. A little bit about myself, I have two young kids currently in D-41. So we're invested in D-41 in a long haul. And I have found D-41 to be a wonderful community and I wanted to contribute to this community in a positive way. And education is an area that I'm passionate about. You know, my parents immigrated to the United States when I was young so that my brother and I could have better education opportunities. And I think we took that to heart and have done well for ourselves. And now that I have kids, I want to impart that same value to them. I currently work in financial compliance. We help managers oversee their operations. We identify control points, we show our weaknesses, and I think that's something I can bring to the table in overseeing the school district. We moved to Glen Allen where it's excellent schools and I think many people have done the same for the same reason. And if I were elected, I would be, I would want to honor the trust that the community places on its education system by providing consistent, high-quality education with accountability to taxpayers.
Thank you. Mr. Bruno?
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this forum on and all of you people for coming out this morning. I'd like to use my time this way. Albert Einstein was once asked, "What's the one thing that you most wanted to know?" And he answered, "I only want to know God's thoughts and the rest are just mere details." He went on to explain that what he meant was that people should seek answers to big questions, that the knowledge they should pursue should be the kind of knowledge that addresses the core questions. And once you have those questions answered, the rest of the details would unfold. Well, contributing to the governance of a school system certainly involves a ton of details, but I believe at the heart of the matter, it is the student-teacher relationship that unfolds daily in every classroom that is the driving force of education. It's the core question that a school board member should be able to address. And if I'm fortunate enough to be elected to the board and serve, I believe my deep, intimate understanding and appreciation of that relationship can be put to work in the task of serving the education of our children in this community. I've been a professional educator for a quarter of a century. I've been a director of an academic program. I've dealt with budgets, I've dealt with hiring, I've done assessments. I'm the author of four books and dozens of articles. I have been focused on educational policy for most of a lifetime. And I am the proud father of a graduate of District 41 and a loving wife who taught 17 years in Hattie. They are both inspirations to me. With 15 seconds left, I want to say thank you again. I look forward to getting to know you during this event. Thank you.
Mr. Lobach?
All right, can everybody hear me? I'm good. I'd like to start by thanking the League for hosting this event. Thank you very much for coming. It's a wonderful event to have the community put out. I think it's great to see all the participation. By waving it out to you, my name is Jason Lobach. I'm a candidate for D-41 and... Does he have a hand? Oh, sorry. My name's Jason Lobach. I'm a candidate for District 41 School Board. My wife and I have lived here in Glen Allen since 2004. Together, we're raising five kids. Evan, Ethan, Caitlin. It's her birthday today. I got her birthday, Caitlin. Alexis and Parker. We have one more on the way in May, so I'm going to have kids in District 41 for quite a long time. In 2006, my wife and I became the League of Guardians of Evan, Ethan, and Caitlin. And had immediately brought me into getting further and further involved in the community and with our schools. I've had the opportunity to coach some of my kids, probably a lot of my kids, in a variety of sports over the years. And I've been able to get in the classroom to speak, to read, and those kinds of things. My kids also encouraged me to get involved in the district's parent special education classes. And I'm looking forward to continuing these experiences and in the new ones to come. Professionally, I'm an attorney and partner with your school offices. We represent small businesses throughout the area, a good number of which are contractors. Over the years, I've dealt with numerous public construction projects, numerous school construction projects involved. I've dealt with school boards just to clean up projects on that. I've dealt with projects from the bid phase to the closeout, getting in replacement contractors to finish off jobs with the boards still going ahead of these situations. As everyone knows, the current board has placed a $24.2 million referendum on the ballot and is asking the community to support that referendum for construction projects. My experience in construction will be a great benefit to the board, seeing these projects through, dealing with the hiccups that are found a couple of years ago. I'd like to thank you all again for coming and I appreciate the questions you've promised today. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Curry?
Good morning. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this. My name is Bruce Curry. I'm a 20-year resident of Glen Allen. My wife lived here a little bit longer. I won't tell you how much longer. She grew up here. She went to Main Street School, Hadley Elementary School, and eventually Glenbard West. We have two children and my daughter is a sixth grader at Hadley and Josh is a sophomore at Glenbard West. They both went to Lincoln, attended Hadley. My daughter attends there now. And also, my son's a sophomore at Glenbard West. We also went to the COD Full Day Kindergarten Program because both of us work and we had a great experience there too. As far as my education and work are concerned, I'm a fifth-grade bilingual teacher in Joliet in Spanish. I have a master's in education and an MBA. And earlier in my career, I worked in finance and management. So that's a little bit about me, but I'd really like to tell you why I want to run for school board. I truly have a real passion for education. I've attended or listened to every school board meeting over the last three years, so I'll be up to speed on what's going on. I think I bring a unique perspective to the board that I feel isn't there right. I'm an elementary school teacher and I know the best practices for children at this age. I can offer realistic insight into how board decisions affect our kids in the classroom. Finally, my work in finance, I think, would be helpful with what would hopefully be the upcoming building and construction. I feel like I'm well-qualified and offer a perspective of what it's like to be in the trenches and be an elementary school teacher on a school board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Finally, Ms. Boyd?
Good morning, everybody. I'm Marty Boyd. I'd like to tell you a little about myself, things you probably don't know about me. I grew up in the Midwest. I went to college at DePaul University, Greencastle, Indiana. I have a Bachelor of Arts degree and that became a springboard for me in my career in commercial construction and real estate development. I spent a couple of decades doing that type of work. I have a little bit of experience in capital improvement projects as I know that districts is getting ready to embark on some themselves. I worked at O'Hare Airport on behalf of United Airlines and you can imagine the challenges of dealing in live buildings and trying to do improvements. I've had lots of experience doing that, as well as going into Chicago Public Schools quite some time ago, but really helps put a perspective on the quality of our schools as compared to other places. Our life in Glen Allen, it began about seven years ago. We were thinking of where we're going to raise our children and we had the opportunity to find homes in both Wheaton and Glen Allen. Part of our due diligence was to go and tour elementary schools. And on the same morning, one spring day, we went to the second one. We knew as we were leaving that school that District 41 was the place where we were going to raise our children. The Lincoln Elementary School staff and everyone that we met there was so warm and welcoming, it was hands down, no questions asked. As far as the district is concerned, I've been with the, I've been involved at the local PTA level as well as with the district by attending board meetings, being on the district task force, trying to use my background for the good of the community. So I look forward to your questions today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We can all have a silent moment of gratitude for the microphone, Patty. We now have a microphone. So we will just go in rotation. The candidate who started, who went last will start first next time and we'll just work our way around the list. The first question is for Mr. Bruno. What role does the school board play in selecting curriculum and determining instructional strategy?
How's this sounding? Am I okay? The school board frankly should not play a role in determining what their school personnel and their administration, their director, who are experts in curriculum development and pedagogy and assessment, that should be driven by the experts in the school. It's really not the role of the board to pick, to pick one approach as opposed to another. They should certainly do due diligence in overseeing the development of those programs, make sure that the progress is being made, make sure there's assessment, but provide support where support is needed and some guidance where that is the case. It's simply not the role however the board to manage the schools and allow the experts to do what they've been trained to do. Hopefully that's better.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lobach?
We're trying not to hurt each other with my head above our heads. What was the question? I'm sorry.
Question was, what role does the school board play in selecting curriculum and determining instructional strategy?
I think over the years, there's been, there's been numerous curriculum changes throughout the district, in fact, on average, one over every other year. I think what's important with our classrooms and our kids is that we allow, like I said, like we get back to allowing our teachers to teach. We have wonderful teachers and wonderful staff and wonderful schools. We need as a board, not to direct what they're doing, but to make sure that we are providing them with the resources, the capabilities, the technology, professional development, what they need as teachers and staff and facilities in order to allow the best supportive growth and development of all students in the district.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lobach or Mr. Curry? Sorry.
As a teacher myself, I've seen a lot of change happen over the last 10 years that I've been teaching, or nine years. There's been the change from ISAT to PARC and that really caused a scramble within four teachers to, you know, get up to speed and get the materials they needed to teach this new area. The board recently implemented, I think the board's role is to be one of oversight. There was board discussion and they approved Lucy Hawkins for literature for English Language Arts and Eureka Math. I'm not as familiar with Eureka Math, or with Lucy Hawkins, but with Eureka Math, I am familiar with it because I use it in my classroom. And I think the board made a good choice there. I don't think it's the board's decision to, I think it's good that they oversee this, but I think we do need to, you know, trust the experts and oftentimes go with their expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Boyd?
Well, I think that the, there's two points that I'd like to make in answering this question. First is, I see that the board, the community, and the administration, we have a partnership in order to educate kids in our community. I think that from a board perspective, we should have common goals as to, well, I'll say, the level of expectations that we want our kids to experience in a K through A grade level and have ready for high school. So I think it's important that we document what those expectations are and I think it's important that the administration clearly communicates the reasons why they select and use circumvent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dan Brozio?
I agree that as a board member, that we should leave it up to the experts in administration to carry out curriculum, I think, for board education, it's not oversight. But also, I think it's actually very important since it's an elective issue to also be, to represent the community. So in that regard, and also be accountable to the taxpayers.
Thank you. Mr. Lobach will go next. Please tell us one thing you believe District 41 is doing right and one thing you think District 41 needs to be changing. What would you suggest specifically recommend for the change?
It's a loaded question.
I want to remind you all that the candidates will be available in the room next door after this, so if one minute isn't enough for you to get the full extent of what they're wanting to say about it, feel free to go in, have a coffee, and talk with them more. Should we begin? Okay.
Let me answer, let me answer the question this way. I think it's honestly one thing that they're doing well and one thing that they're doing poorly, and that is listening. That's the backbone of our district. That's the backbone of our community, listening to everyone that's involved. Over the last few years, the district administration has been proffering that desire and that want to listen. What I've seen is that they're not taking those active steps to hear what's being told and to act as it appears. Listening is a two-way street. It's one thing to have someone talk to you. It's another thing to be engaged in that conversation. And I think what's most important is that our board, our administration engages in that listening process with the community to help best support all students in the district.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Curry?
I think our teachers, and I think one of the things the district does really well is, you know, our teachers are very dedicated and work very hard at teaching our kids. I think we have great parent involvement in things like the PTA. And I think the board recently has done a good job of asking the administration to give them five-year projections on what the outlook is for the district financially. What's that shown, what that has shown is that within the next five years, the district will be running a $10 million deficit if nothing's done at all. One thing that I do think needs changing, and I think this is really important, is Monday I went to a board meeting and they discussed special education. In that room, there were, by the special, there was a presentation. In that room were many very upset special education parents. I think that we'll deal with this in the future. I think it's very important for our whole community.
Hey, thank you. Ms. Boyd?
Starting with what we're doing right. Well, I think we have great teachers and I say that because, you know, I hear from my teachers on a fairly regular basis of what's going on in the classroom. They're good communicators, they're willing to meet with parents beyond that 10-minute slot once an academic year or so. We have the advantage of that, good quality people in the right places. Things that I would change, and this is something I think we have control over, which is our board meeting structure. Many people complain about the length of the board meetings and I'm hoping that we can work together to improve that timing.
Thank you. Ms. Dan Brozio?
Well, I currently have my two kids in D-41. One is in kindergarten and one is in third grade. I'm happy to report that they love school and so kind of according to what everybody else is saying, I think we have a wonderful teachers who are dedicated and, you know, they make learning fun. And that's really all, you know, a lot of one and all and I think the parents are looking for one, send our kids to school. One thing I would like to see improvement is accountability. You know, Bruce had touched on that we have, that this is coming up and, you know, this is something we really have to work on and also, you know, in the special education area, you know, I had to meet with them and just like learn about them and that's something that we should really...
Oh, Mr. Curry, stop. Yeah, thank you. And Mr. Bruno?
Thank you. I'm going to echo some things that people said. The teachers and the staff are incredible. So let me just say something specific about a program that I think is really impressive. I think the dual-language program is, is an amazing program. It is a destination program and is a model program. I spent some time over in Churchill. The other day, I was a little surprised to find out that it hadn't actually been visited by board members. And sitting in those classrooms was extraordinary to see the way in which this dual-language program was working. And as an educator at the University of Illinois, you're really doing something incredibly good there. An area that needs improvement, based on the cultural surveys that have been done year after year, I think the teachers have said that they like to feel a little bit more empowered in the work that they do. And this goes back to the initial way we responded, giving them some room to actually create in the classroom and to be recognized for their accomplishments.
Thank you. Okay, next question, Mr. Curry will go first. Do you support the April 4th referendum? If no, why not? And what alternatives would you give? If yes, please explain why.
I do support the April 4th referendum. It's $24.2 million and I think it's important. We've had the portables at Hadley for, I want to say around 15 years. And I was on the facilities task force where it was about 30, 30 members that we met for about nine months and we really hashed through the facilities issues. We started with everybody wanting full day kindergarten down to maybe we do nothing up to, you know, let's at least, and I think we all decided that the most important thing was to do, you know, was to replace the portables at Hadley. There was some other work that's involved there, life, safety, health, but I am in support of the April 4th referendum. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Boyd?
The easy answer is say ditto, but let me just try to expand on my perspective. Coming from a construction and real estate background and spending time in live buildings and knowing that buildings have needs, whether it be a roof or a mechanical system, those things don't last forever. It's, we're in a situation now, as Bruce mentioned, there is a five-year capital improvement budget in hand that shows a deficit spending, you know, the money that looks very tidy and forward without any, without any additional work to that. The fact that I know buildings and see the needs, I support the referendum. The last thing I'd like to say, since I have 30 seconds left, is that, you know, what's another key piece to the referendum is that we do start planning again for the future and that our facilities are included in that next.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dan Brozio?
Yeah, I was also on the task force and so I will read what Bruce said. I do think that what it's done is due diligence. And now it's the voters' turn to voice their opinion. I think actually what's more important as a candidate that, that we should look forward that, you know, we, if it passes, it's, we owe it to the community to make sure that it's a successful... it's a successful project, that, you know, it's under budget, on time, construction quality, and if it doesn't, we'll, we'll have to figure out how to, how to solve some of the problems that we're trying to fix.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bruno?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I do support it enthusiastically, and when I knock on doors going all over the community, I have conversations about the referendum and I make sure that voters know that I support it. Why I support it, you've heard a bunch of things. Clearly, these are needed improvements. It's, it does appear to be the best approach to financing the work. You know, quite frankly, the district really engaged in long-term, significant, impressive outreach to the community, so lots of voices were heard. I really want to tip my hat to the board. The board found a way to come up with a smart program, a smart resolution, and they reached consensus, and I'm impressed with that work. And finally, good working conditions. Even something as basic as the HVAC system, good working conditions are darn good learning conditions.
Thank you. And Mr. Lobach?
Just like everyone else, I support the referendum. As a taxpayer, a voting, profitable, beside the yard. As a potential board member, however, we have to look at the budgets going forward and look as to why do we need to do that, and what are we going to do to make sure that we can build up our reserves so that we can deal in the next five years with those projects that are going to be needed. Hopefully, the referendum passes on April 4th, we can start building our reserves going forward, so when these type of capital improvement projects come up, we have that room in our budget not to have to ask the community to attend. If the referendum doesn't pass, as everyone up here, this, these are needed issues, and we are going to have to look at our budget, find ways that we can make from today to deal with these. And then one of the biggest questions with this referendum, it's not yes, it's whether these projects are going to be done.
Okay, and Ms. Boyd goes next. There's been a lot of discussion about District 41 needing to rein in spending. In what areas do you think the district could make reductions in or control of spending?
Well, I think, let's start with things that we know. That's, that's very difficult first to answer from being, you know, sitting at a board meeting and hearing some discussions, really, without knowing more details and what's available to the public, I hesitate to start naming off, you know, three or five things that can be dealt with, but I'd like to instead to talk about approach. In the course of my career, we've dealt with a lot of budgets, and it's, it's pretty common that in order to rein in spending, you have to look at everything, and you have to understand why you're doing it and what it costs in order to do it. And so that would be the approach that I would bring to the board, is to be analytical and be very thoughtful and thorough in looking at everything, see what would be.
Ms. Diane Brogio?
We touched up on the deficit spending, so I think it's, this question isn't just theoretical, we actually have to do it. And the nice thing is now we have the five-year projection, and we know we're going to have deficit spending, and the administrators know that now, and we know this since no fender, so I hope they're sharpening their pencils because we'll have to look at our budget and see ways that we can cut. And I work in compliance, and we have helped clients tighten up their budgets by setting clear policy on expenses. Not only has it shaped our cost, but it also gave stakeholders comfort that there's control, and so that's, I think, one, and I think that's good for D41. And also, perhaps we should also have some sort of limit on raises that we have control over.
Thank you. Mr. Bruno?
Well, let me maybe be a bit contrarian on this one and challenge the premise. I actually, to the degree in which someone who's not on the board can know these things, based on the information that I've seen, I certainly wouldn't characterize the board as burning up money or as being indifferent or bad stewards with resources. And there's a number of ways in which you could, data points in which you can point to, but perhaps we just should pay attention to what the experts who've come in and analyzed the finances of the board have said, and you can go to the website and read a number of these summaries. Here's the, just from one page of this analysis, value, "Good academic performance at lower-than-average cost." Actually, the district's per pupil spending is below the benchmark districts that we compare ourselves to. "The district exceeds expectations based on other districts with similar student makeup." And finally, they conclude, year after year, "Very strong finances."
Thank you.
I guess I'll follow up to Dr. Bruno. If the district is studying below average for benchmark districts or studies student education, could why be projecting a $10 million deficit? I had a good conversation with Dr. Gordon the other day, and one of the issues I brought up was the need for, among, to have a line-by-line budget presented, so that way we can look at each area of spending, so that as a board and as a community, we can let everyone know clearly and articulately where our money is being spent and what is of a priority to our community in continuing on spending or maybe cutting back some areas of spending. But I don't think we can do that blindly, and I don't think that we can do that without having that line-by-line knowledge, you know, where each, every dollar goes, because if you cut money for one program, you're cutting services that some college is getting. But it's not just a simple question, so every single line needs to be looked at, and it needs to be looked at clearly and articulately.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Curry?
I definitely think, because of this impending budget, or budget deficit over the next five years, we definitely as a board are going to have to look at the prioritization of spending. We need to balance what is right for the kids with also, you know, the community. Our budget is not limited, although sometimes I wish it was. I work in a district where our per pupil spending is about $3,000 less than what it is in Glen Allen, and I would indicate that it's inadequate, but 65% of that money comes from state and federal resources. Here, we only get 7% from state and federal resources. So I really think we need to watch the pennies and dollars we spend here, and I think that Jason has a great idea to, to look at that line by line and really prioritize what we're, what, what the needs of the district are.
Okay, thank you. Next question, we'll start with Ms. Diane Brogio.
Sorry, I'm on the wrong page.
What is your opinion on House Bill 610 recently introduced that will affect public schools related to federal funds for private schools?
Can you elaborate on what that bill is? It's going to come up.
I think the question is, what is your opinion on any kind of legislation that would introduce federal funding for private schools?
Well, I honestly don't know the details of the bill or, but at the end of the day, you know, we'll have to, you know, plan for and understand what, what it means for our district, which is the public school, and look at it from there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bruno?
It's a terrible idea. Anybody who lives in the public education system and it's a threat to American democracy and to helping people move from one class level to the next and diversifying the, the community and the culture can't conceivably see this as a good idea. True, you know, the truth is vouchers have been around a long time. I think some of the early programs started in Milwaukee. They have very checkered and mixed results for everyone that looks like it's worked reasonably well. There's another, two or three that show that it's failed badly. But we have to keep in mind that schools are not profit centers. They don't run in the same way that the private sector runs with the bottom line always, always in focus, and the voucher system is an attempt really to privatize, to corporatize, public education. Your community's kids are not widgets, they're not investments in somebody's bottom line in a public school in which you're using tax dollars to send kids to public school. You have accountability.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lobach? I'd like to remind you that the position is, hold your applause, because we don't support or reject any one position you do today, so hold your applause till the end, and we'll have a great chance to applaud everyone. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lobach?
I have no idea what House Bill 610 is. I have absolutely no idea. I have no, I have no idea what it involves. I have no idea what's included within it. I have no idea what's buried within it. To take Dr. Bruno's face, I never deal with vouchers, and let's look at it. Each and every person in this room looked at the school that they moved here, and each memory person in this room thought, "We have great schools," and that's why we came. Some kind of voucher system is it going to be a, a way for our community to continue building our schools good, like, exactly, everyone came here because of that. So we're going to need to look at the base common level. Doesn't matter what the funding source is. It matters a product of, you know, for our kids. So what are the, the money's going to come from, the federal government, from state government, from local government? Some of the product we put up, some of the education we provide our kids, and providing a good school system to everyone. That includes our general education program, that includes building up a special education program. We have to continue to build and progress our schools and our education for everyone.
Mr. Curry?
Federal funds for private schools. I, you know, I'm a public school teacher. I teach every child offensive in my classroom, no matter what, and I know, I have a feeling that this might be more in the case for high-poverty schools. I could be wrong about that, but I wonder how, how much it'll affect. I think it's, I'm, you know, I know that there's been questions about how effective vouchers are for schools and would need to study that more, but in general, I don't, I'm not for vouchers for public schools at this moment. I would have to see how the bill is structured and how it gets planned, but we'll see. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Boyd?
Yeah, my ideas on this would be that anytime federal funds come into a local community, there's always strings attached, and I think that one of the benefits of school districts is that there is a local school board, and the community knows what is perhaps best for their locality. So we also know that, or as I'm learning more and more, that the state and the federal government do have input as to what happens in our local schools, and I'd just like to keep the control more local.
Okay, thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Bruno. What is the role of the school? Thank you.
Thank you.
What is the role of a school board member and what specific qualities would you bring to the board?
As I noted in a previous answer, I really do think the school board should be engaged in establishing vision, helping with direction, and providing the support and the resources that are needed for your classroom and your school site experts to perform. What would I bring to the board? I have been in education, as I noted, for a quarter of a century, and I've engaged with school boards, I've engaged with administrators, I've engaged with policymakers, I've engaged with teachers. It's a subject that I have researched, it's a subject that I have studied, and that has been at the core of my being for a very long time. I would also add that I do believe that we can be really tough on issues, but we can be really, really kind and deliberative with one another, and I think people that know me would say that I'm a bridge builder and I'm kind.
Okay. Mr. Lobach?
I think that the local school board is a critical link between the community and our public schools. And the board serves the community, and serves the community in really important ways. First and foremost, board looks out for the students. You know, education is not just a line item at a agenda. It's the only thing that board deals with, and that's probably the most important thing that all members of the board need to keep in mind. I think another real important thing that board members need to remember is that the answers aren't always important, it's a question. We need to keep questioning and questioning and questioning, because those questions that are going to drive us forward, it's those questions being asked of why these things are being done, and it's addressing issues that are important, not just individually, but to everyone, and making sure that everyone's needs are being properly serviced.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Curry?
I mean, the role of a school board member is hiring and evaluating the superintendent, setting the levy, setting budgets, doing those types of things, but it's much more than that. It's really taking the interest of the students, the parents, the community, and the homeowners into, into account and prioritizing their needs. I started a Facebook page or a Facebook group called District 41 Parents, where I think we've been able to have an active discussion about the, the decisions that the school board has made. I enjoy that discussion, and I enjoy what Jason said about what, you know, about the amount of questioning that needs to happen. I think more questions are good, and that type of inquiry, so the community is comfortable and trusts the decision that the board and the administration are making is important. Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of points I'd like to make.
Ms. Boyd?
Any questions? No, it's your turn. Okay, my turn. Thank you. The points I'd like to make is that, you know, the role of a school board member is to be open-minded and not come like preconceived, you know, just how things should be. I, you know, having been on other boards, you know, people bring their skill sets to the table, and if they can articulate why they're doing something, that should be listened to. I think that the school board has a responsibility of setting the bar for the community and for the administration, and as I said before, I think it's really a partnership, and people need to be actively engaged in their children's education, as we've seen recently. Thank you. Teachers need to be comfortable in coming and talking to the board, and we can have a good conversation.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Diane Brogio?
Trying not to repeat something that somebody said. I do think, so one thing I did mention that I used to be an engineer, I also, I keep doing, built bridges. In light of the projects that are coming up, I think that's a kind of a good background to have. Also, I do think the board, as a board education member, it is important to represent and align D41 with the wishes of the people that they represent, and to be open-minded, to be good listener of the voices in the community.
Okay, thank you. The next question is on the subject of specialization, and about half of the questions asked today are on that subject. So what I'm going to do is divide the question into two parts, and the first part is, do you feel it is the board's responsibility to dictate whether or not specialization continues? After you've answered that, I'm going to come back and ask what your particular position is. So you have two chances. The first question is, and we'll start.
Yeah, you set this for a minute, and I just.
No, you have a whole minute. So start with Mr. Lobach. Do you feel it is the board's responsibility to dictate whether or not specialization continues?
No, I don't. I think, as I stated earlier, let our teachers teach. As a board, we look at agenda items that are brought to our attention, and those agenda items, I hope, will be coming from inside these buildings when it comes to curriculum matters and how our children are taught. I'm not a teacher, I don't have a degree in education. Let's focus on people that do, we have experts, as I said before, we have great teachers, great teachers, and if the best with educator kids is specialization, fine. If they feel that there's alternative ways to educate our kids, fine, bring those, let's have those discussions. But I don't think it's a board's job to dictate that. But I don't think it's a board's job to dictate that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Curry.
I think our job in this is oversight. It's our job to make sure that it's being implemented correctly and then analyzing and seeing how both teachers like it, students like it, and parents like it. I've heard it's very popular with teachers. And on the other hand, I've heard also that for some children, the transition can be difficult. My daughter went through it and she seemed to be okay. So my position is, we need to analyze it. I think in the upcoming board meetings, there are going to be some discussions about specialization. And I would be interested to see what that report says and make a decision from there. But I think also, in the older grades, it may be appropriate. I'm not sure that it's appropriate for kindergarten or first grade. I think that's a time when a kid really needs, you know, that one-on-one contact with a teacher. The other thing is.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Curry? I mean, sorry, Ms. Boyd.
Can you just repeat the question for me?
Yes. Do you feel it is the board's responsibility to dictate whether or not specialization continues? The board as a whole?
I've been asked that question before. Obviously, it's a hot topic, but here in town, people want to know what the candidates speak. And this is what I basically said. Today, I'm not really sure why we're doing it. And the reason I asked that question is because specialization was part of a piece of Think Tank initiative. And many of the other elements of that initiative have since been pulled back from them, are no longer happening in our schools. So why has specialization remained? I think it's going to be a robust debate about why it should remain, if that's the case. But at this point in time, I really don't know why it should. So how do we take that forward? Well, the evaluation has to include details besides, I like it. I mean, it's like, the question I have is, how well are the kids doing on their test scores?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Diambrogi?
No, I think it's not with the board of education to dictate. I think it's important, though, to vet it and ask what the objectives are and make sure that we're meeting those objectives. Also. So I have 30 seconds. But anyway, in a day, I think it's important for the board to provide oversight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Curry.
It's not the board's responsibility to be dictating whether specialization continues. The board really can take steps to properly assess how well it's working. It can certainly make, it can certainly listen to recommendations for changes. It has multiple data points. It has ways of understanding the way this program is working. Teachers can be surveyed, principals can be talked to. You can look at assessments of students. All of that stuff is out there. And it's the proper role of the board, I think, to look at that and then provide its pressure upon how well it's working. But clearly, the board shouldn't be stepping in and through some sort of majority vote, purely on the numbers, overrule what all the board says unanimously. That is, that it's the voice of the classroom that should predominate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The second part of this question asks for your personal opinion. So if yes, what is your personal position on specialization?
Is it a B or a C?
It starts with Mr. Curry.
Second part of this.
So yes, to recap from before, I think it's important that, you know, the board has oversight on it, see that it's working. You know, personally, I think I worry about the 25% of kids in our school district who don't benefit from specialization. We have odd number of classrooms in many of our, in many of our class, or many of our grade levels. So with those parents, or with those kids, they don't receive specialization. And I think it might be the board's role to look into what we could do about that. Again, my daughter went through specialization, starting in third grade and through fourth and fifth. And it was wrapped in with Think Tank. I think she was, you know, she was fine with it. So I'd like to talk more and analyze more, but I'll be waiting for the report. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Boyd.
I'd like to talk about some of the, what I consider the downside. And I don't know if I'm for or against, frankly, but I'd like to just express this view. What my children have experienced with specialization is that from one teacher to the next, some of the fundamentals of learning are getting lost. And what I mean by that is in written word or by spelling or whatever, children that struggle a little bit with spelling, they don't get a consistent message from their teachers throughout their day. One teacher cares about spelling, one teacher doesn't care about spelling. Well, as a parent, I care about spelling. Call me a professional. I just think that there's maybe some work for improvement to make sure that all teachers are not just delving into their subject matter, but they're really making sure that those baseline fundamentals are being achieved by each student.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Diambrogi?
I was going to say, I was going to say earlier that with board education, I know that specialization is coming up for what they call the five-year review cycle. I think it would be a great opportunity to, like that woman said, to pull in all the data. And actually, it's a very good opportunity to figure out if there's any support, more support included for any of the programs that is under review. Our personal experience has been good. I think it makes sense to have content, subject experts. We've had a lot of changes. You know, we just had literacy and math, new math curriculum. So I think it makes the transition easier. I have heard maybe the younger grades, whether it was in second grade, that it would be a little harder transition for.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bruno?
My daughter Sarah did not have the opportunity when she attended Lincoln to go through the program as it is. But quite frankly, what I've come to learn about it and what the research seems to strongly suggest is that it's a very, very exciting program. It's a way in which what teachers will call to create the wow moment, if you will. Because teachers can become content experts, and I think that's what you want in the classroom. But it also gives the opportunity to the student, even at a young age, to begin to explore, to take that first step on that journey to becoming the, you know, the next Shakespeare, perhaps. And so this idea that you can really concentrate in these, in these subject areas, I think, quite frankly, is worth the investment. And any of the hiccups that come with transition can be managed by mature, caring, responsible leaders in the school.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robot?
When I was in fourth and fifth grade, we had specialists in mathematics and I joined. Caitlin went to specialization now, she's enjoying it. However, if we're going to continue with specialization, we need to make sure that it works for all of our students. As Bruce pointed out, not all of our kids are getting the opportunity to have specialized classrooms. Another, if you have a child who's serving, receiving RTI services, providing core services, both teachers are necessarily in tune as to what needs, about that child needs. For example, if you have a child that is having difficulty in reading and you're receiving services, you'll go meet with your assistant principal and your literacy teacher and the writers that specialize, reading specialists, what have you, in order to come up with the best ways to, and strategy to help your kid in reading. However, your steam teacher might not be, is not in on that meal. And so if he does not know what strategies are being used for that kid, that would help him with their story time and their science. So if we're going to continue, we need to make sure we're special all students.
Next question will start with Ms. Boyd. What level of involvement do you have in District 41? Do you have kids in the district?
Yes, I do. I have kids in the district this year for three more years. I have been, since I quit left work, the whole time being a stay-at-home mom, I've started volunteering and heard that volunteer work ended up in our schools. At a local school level, I've been involved with PTA, doing fundraising with the parents, as well as initiating and leading after-school programs. Last year, I saw a gap in some of the curriculum that unfortunately my children were experiencing. And I worked on filling the gap by running some after-school programs. At a district level, three of us at the table participated in the district's facilities task force, and I've done other initiatives as those opportunities become available.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Diambrogi?
I had to have kids in the district, so I was able to help out inside the classroom, maybe math helpers, PBL, and at the library or R or anything like that. So we have a wonderful PTA program and that's, it's really great to get the parents involved. Also was on the facilities task force and I, you know, I didn't just learn about facilities issues. We talked about the finances, I learned about the programs, we went into all the, all the schools. I learned a lot about Hadley and how it works and their issues. I learned about the history of D-41, so that was a really good experience for me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bruno?
Well, as I previously noted, my daughter Sarah graduated from West and soon will be graduating from North Central College. So I certainly have, yes, thank you. We can certainly applaud that. So that Sarah had had an experience, she did have to overcome some learning challenges. So that brought my wife and I to really get to in contact with the district. Of course, my wife was a teacher at Hadley for 17, you know, anyway, for a while, she said, I'll tell them how long. For a long time. And that certainly gave me some real insight into what's happening in schools. I do want to note, and I do take great pride in this, that during my sabbatical at University of Illinois, I was the fifth-grade room, and this is what they called me, I was the fifth-grade-room mom. And during Halloween, I actually dressed as a mom. I'm a pool dog, is what people tell me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robot?
I did graduate from South Carolina.
I've lost the question. What is your level of involvement in District 41 and you currently have kids in the district?
Wow, it's a much more, I got a lot of kids. And that being said, I have kids all over the district. I've had, I almost haven't go through, I'm not that frightened, at Hadley. I'm going to have you right now. I have another child that's a fifth-grade dad at that, I think, that's going to be transitioning into Hadley. I have a preschool, that's at Park District, preschool that's transitioning into kindergarten at that, frankly. And then I have a son, Parker, who has Down syndrome, who is going to be transitioning into preschool and urban childhood program. So I have kids throughout, in all programs of the district, whether it be special services, whether it be general services, throughout, all different schools throughout. And I guess there are one more on the way. I wouldn't be here for a while. I'm stressed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robot? I'm sorry, Mr. Curry?
My daughter's a sixth grader at Hadley, and she had a great transition from fifth grade at Lincoln to Hadley. And then my son also went to Lincoln, Hadley, and that was a sophomore at Lombard West. So he's just recently left the district. But I was also on the facilities task force and really enjoyed that work. I really feel like we learned a lot about the district, how the district is and what they need. Also, I've been going the last three years of board meetings, so I'm up on what's going on. My wife and I both work, so my involvement in the PTA has been less than what I would want it to be. But I have been a soccer coach in the Park District for a lot of the kids who do go to District 41 and District 59.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Diambrogi will be our next question, take our next question. Describe your opinion on how board of education. Describe your opinion on how board of education members should or should not use social media to share their opinions and/or positions on District 41-related business.
You know, I think it's a big country, so I, you know, I don't see why we should restrict board members to express their opinions, especially if they're, or if they're concerned about D-41 parents. You know, if you're a parent, you know, you're still, you're still a parent. If you're a board member, you're still a taxpayer, you're still a parent. So I don't see some reason why we should restrict that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bruno?
So I believe there is a board policy, I can't quote it for you, but there is a board policy that establishes some restrictions or some guidelines, and this would not be unexpected for the use of social media. So one, I guess, one of my concerns is that that platform is not necessarily the most deliberative, it's not necessarily the most thoughtful platform. It's a place where people can, too often it can be used to throw bricks and to light fires. So I do think board members should be very conscientious that whatever they do, they represent the community and they should only be putting forward the very best of what D-41 stands for. So I suggest deep caution in using these platforms for expressing points of view on topics.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robot?
I think it's an excellent tool that the board can use to communicate with the community without violating privacy concerns. Just like any tool, a hammer hits a nail, doesn't do much for a screw. We must use lots of other avenues to communicate and engage with the district, whether that be through parent collaboratives, whether that just become attending meetings, what have you. Fighting the community to participate in this process is the most important thing. And using all tools in our toolbox in a effective, responsible, proper way, I'm all for it. I'm not here for me or my kids or my neighbors' kids. I'm here for everybody. That's what the board's for. Every person in this room and any tool that we can utilize to bring one more person into the process and bring one more person aware of a service that might be available to them, let's use it. Let's utilize what we have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Curry?
Well, I think I'm for it. I started a D-41 Parents website or page, and I think there's a lot of interesting discussion on that. I haven't really added it too much, and I would agree, there is some, you know, brick throwing, et cetera, but I've tried to moderate that, especially around election time. I put puppies on there for everybody to calm down. But I believe in increasing communication. There are a lot of people that can't make it to board meetings and really need to know what the issues are. And I think from the special education report, there was a real need to, that we see that the communication is lacking. That's what the report said. So within, you know, I think I'd be cautious, but no personnel issues or something like that. But I do think it is important for board members to state their opinions on subjects.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Boyd?
I'm possibly one of the few people in the room that don't really use a whole lot of social media. I actually prefer more one-on-one conversations with people so that they can come and talk to me. I find even when I was working and emails often were covered, people would say things that they wouldn't say to you in person. So I would just rather have a one-on-one conversation. If you have an issue, please come and talk to me.
And I believe in free speech, so I think people need to be responsible with free speech. But if you have a question, please come talk to me.
Okay, thank you. The next question will start with Mr. Bruno. What are your views on the FLES and dual-language programs?
I think very highly of them. I think the dual-language program, program as developed by Dr. McCluskey, is really a very impressive accomplishment, and it's one that needs to be raised up in this community. I think offering the 30 minutes of Spanish through FLES is also a real strong statement that you're investing in the future, that you're attempting to create bilinguality, that you're attempting to develop the ability to communicate across cultures. We should be preparing students for the world that they're living in and that's evolving, not the world that's passing by. And I think these two programs are programs that the district should feel very, very proud of. I believe it's attracting the people to the district. I know that Dr. McCluskey feels phone calls and inquiries from not only other places in the United States, but from overseas.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Loba.
We all have, people from, my wife's family's from Poland. I immigrated here. My wife from Canada, come over to boarding us, got their first language in Polish. People learn to speak English in school. Providing services is a responsibility of the district. And the dual-language program is something that is one of our responsibilities. And from all I've heard, it's a great success. We need to continue to provide the services to all students, whether that be dual-language students, whether that be special needs students, whatever. We need to make sure that all of our programs are at that same level as that dual-language program, as Dr. Prudus said. We're looking forward to that, and people should be looking at our district for all of our programs.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Curry.
You're my estro bilingue in Julia, Illinois. Yo, yo, tengo pollo para el programa bilingüe, or dual-language, in Churchill. I'm really, I do really support the dual-language program in Churchill. It's, I think it's the best, you know, being a bilingual teacher, we don't do it at the school. I teach at, but I know there's been talk about wanting to go to that, go to that format. And I think it's to the benefit of both the children who are in it and the children who are non-Spanish dominant and are learning another language. I also think it helps the community to be closer to, it helps to bridge some community, you know, some kids who might be in high poverty with other kids who aren't. On FLES, my daughter has gone through the World Cultures Program, and I think it's good.
Thank you. Ms. Boyd.
You know, I appreciate that kids should learn about different world cultures. You know, when I went to college, I spent a year studying abroad in Spain, and I spent time improving my Spanish language skills. So I have full support behind that. I sometimes wonder, though, if there's a little imbalance, because kids are getting less and less history at this level of education. So I'd just like to see a little bit more balance on American history and learning about some of our founding fathers, and that's all I said.
Okay, and Ms. Vianrojo.
I'm sure everybody's shown off the dual-language. I just speak in Chinese. On dual-language, I believe it's, somebody explained it to me a couple times before, but it is, it's state-manded, and it's a smart way to implement that mandate. Yeah, so, and I've heard great feedback from parents, and so I think it's the Board of Education, which is a matter of oversight, and making sure that the kids are well-served. With FLES, again, I think it's going to be reviewed as a program, and I do know it is, it is a cost of like a million dollars a year. And, you know, that's, besides applying course, educating the kids. My kids will be fine with FLES.
Okay, thank you. This will be our last question, and following the answer to this question, again, they should be given a one-minute closing statement. We'll start with Mr. Loba. How do you think the board should address the Special Education Audit?
Wow, this stuff we've been hearing. Straightforward and honestly, with open engagement and collaboration. I spoke with Dr. Gordon about this earlier in the week, we had a good conversation. And one of the commitments that Dr. Gordon gave me was that he was going to engage the parents and was willing to put together a parent of a committee that would report to the board on a consistent basis, whatever that means. Building up that trust is a huge concern, and, sorry, Dr. Gordon, sorry, your email. We can't just wait till then. We need to take steps inch by inch by inch. It's going to be a long process, and it's a solid step. There's a lot of work to do, but it's been said throughout here. We got great teachers, we got great community, we got great staff. Let's utilize them to implement the recommendations made, and let's do them timely and effectively in the best interest of everyone.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Curry.
Well, I think since the independent report for special education was done, I think we definitely know that there's serious issues, mainly with communication and trust, and between the special parent community and the administration, I think. I think that building that trust back up and really listening to parents is monumentally important. I know it's hard, I know it takes a ton of extra work, but we know there's a problem. And as a board member, I really want to work as one of my top priorities on this. I would be interested in, I like what Jason says about the parental committee, and really want to follow up on this and with this, with the administration.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Boyd.
Can you just repeat the question?
Yes. How do you think the board should address the Special Education Audit?
I've said it a couple times during the course of the forum, that I really believe in the partnership between the parents and the community and the school district, and this will be a prime example of how that partnership can grow and improve. I think that the next steps, I heard that there was a meeting next week, unfortunately I had a conflict, I won't be able to attend, but I would like to see that everyone, parents and the school board and the administration, all start to come up with short, long-term goals, and establish their priorities, and bring those to the meeting so that you can have a healthy discussion on how to take this forward.
Thank you. Vianrojo.
Yes, so I also want to sit in on the recent school board meeting where the consultant hired by the school and identified issues and areas of improvement. I did, I took some time off of work to listen to some of the parents so that it could be, kind of put a face to the situation. I don't have kids in special education, and I could really hear their frustration. And I think actually echoing what some people said about communication and trust. And, you know, these parents are really incredible, and I think they would bring a lot to our district by getting even more involved and helping our school raise the bar on special education. I think it's good for all the students.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bruno.
So in reading over the audit and taking that highlighter, the way educators tend to do when they're reading something, this notion of communication, certainly as my colleagues have said, is important to the finding. But just to nuance that, communication came connected to something called collaboration. Communication with who, and for what purpose? And so repeatedly, what popped in that report was the need to create time. Time for communication and collaboration, collaboration amongst teachers, collaboration with parents. So I think the real challenge for the next board in doing a reset is going to be highly structured with the resources we have, additional time, so that very thoughtful and dedicated people can collaborate in the changes that need to be brought. And it's really great to see that the district and Dr. Gordon Phil committed.
Thank you. I want to remind you that if any of you want to talk more with the candidates on their position of any of the questions that were asked here, and I cut them off, there is a meeting greet with coffee and snacks in the next room, and they will all be here. We'll now go into one-minute closing statements, starting with Mr. Curry.
Just to finish on that last point, I do want to applaud the board and the administration for looking into getting TJ consultants to come out and be open, and really open up the school for that Special Education Report. Finally, you know, I think I would offer a unique perspective to the board. I have a master's in education, I'm in the trenches, I'm a classroom teacher. I know how, I know how board decisions affect teachers in the classroom, and I think that's an important perspective. As far as what we need to do, I think we do need to focus on the Special Education Reform. We also need to look into, you know, I'm a supporter of the referendum. I think we've done good due diligence on that, and we need to make those life-saving improvements. And then lastly, I'm interested, my third thing is looking at the budget. I mean, we're projected at a $5,000, or, sorry, $10,000 budget of deficit over five years, and that's very important to look at.
Ms. Boyd.
Of course, I have to thank the League of Wom직 voters for having the forum, and for everyone to come out today and spend your Saturday morning with us, so thank you very much. I look forward to being a new board member, really to continue the legacy of great schools. That's what brought us to Goon Island and like to lead that future generations. I believe that my work background and being analytical and thoughtful and willing to turn, explore all options before making a decision would be really beneficial to the board and not jump to conclusions. So I look forward to it, and I hope that the community will stay engaged so that we can raise academic achievement and excellence for all of our students.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vianrojo.
As I mentioned before, I have kids currently enrolled in District 41, and I have heightened interest in D-41 success. If they're successful, my kids will be too. And, you know, we're, you know, we actually live through the educational experience and are directly impacted by the curriculum decisions or any decisions as taxpayers and as parents. And so with that perspective, and also bringing my work experience of oversight, I like to bring that honor, that trust that the community places on the education system, as I said before, and also I would do so by launching our tax dollars.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Mr. Bruno. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, she said finally.
I can get it out there, don't worry about it.
What do I say? All right. First of all, thank all of you, you've been a wonderful student body. And I do want to make clear that you understand, this has been a really educational process for me. I have thoroughly enjoyed the conversations I've had with people. I look forward to having many more, knocking on doors and talking to folks about the things that they're concerned about. Has been a very satisfying experience for me. But frankly, while I have my own points of views and some strong principles, I'm not fully formed, I am a work in progress. And I think the best way you make decisions is, quite frankly, is by not believing, you now know everything there is to know, but there's still something out there to learn. And this has been a learning experience, and I've been deeply gratified by the opportunity. Finally, you know, there's a lot of decisions to make. Not every decision's going to be dead-on and perfect, but if we get right, that relationship, the school system's going to do some magic.
Okay, thank you. And finally.
I can go without it, don't worry.
Thanks for coming, thanks to me for having you. I want to just follow up on my last answer one more time. With the TJ proposal, I just want to thank the district for its commitment and to improving the specialized services of the district. And while I may say I want master services, what's most important to keep in mind is we all want what's best for all of our students. Disagreement's what makes this process, but we need to get to the core of why we disagree and see what's at the heart of it, and that's our kids. And making sure all of our kids are getting the best services. I love being a part of this community. I've enjoyed all my years here, and I've enjoyed all the people here. And I think what makes our community great is that willingness to help. When we took gardenship, I mean, literally happened on one single Friday, and by that Monday, I had people at my house with bunk beds and all this other place, and I didn't know any of these people. That's what we have here. We have a great place, and I just want to be a part of that.
Okay, thank you. Let's give her a round of applause. I have a few quick closing remarks, and when I'm done talking, you can run in the other room and get snacks. We will be back here at noon for Township High School, District 87.
So I love your topic of reporting.
So I have a couple of things I want to say. One is, DuPage County is a community of 1,000,000 people. In the United States, 78% of these municipal elections are uncontested, which means if there's three spots open, there are only three candidates running. 38% of municipal elections in the United States have no one running for the positions, and the positions are appointed after the election. You in this community are exceedingly fortunate. You have been given the privilege of five choices for four spots. That makes you unique in the United States. And your responsibility for that privilege is not only to vote, but to be an informed voter. So the league brings you opportunity online, the newspapers bring you candidate questionnaires online, the candidates are here, and the idea that you could call them up, or when they come knock on your door, you can talk to them. You, it's your job to go out and be informed so that when you vote, you're not, you're taking advantage of the privilege that you have in the very few of these municipal elections in the United States to have a choice. Another thing to think about is that all you have to do is go and vote. These candidates have spent months knocking on doors, thinking through their positions, attending meetings, and they, you, they deserve your vote. But they don't just deserve your vote. There's all this research that every person in this room influences two other people, 200 other people. Go out and bring your friends to vote. If you can't get your friends to be informed themselves, tell them what you know, and then drag them with you to vote. I timed myself, and it took me nine minutes to look online for my local school board candidates, read up quickly, inform an opinion. You all have nine minutes to give to these people who have donated their time to run for a job that's potentially thankless. The last thing I want to say is that we are the League of Wom직 voters. We are an organization that is over 100 years old. We are rapidly, rigidly nonpartisan. We do not take positions on candidates. We bring a bipartisan, nonpartisan venue to your community, and we, so that you can get to know who the candidates are and what your choices are. The league is always here and will help for you. You could become a member, and all you have to do is be a member, find out more about us. You could serve on a committee, you could serve on a board. You could come to the lovely educational unit meetings. Even if you don't choose to become a member, friend us on Facebook. Pay attention to what we do because... You could serve on a committee, you could serve on a board, you could come to the monthly educational unit meetings. Even if you don't choose to become a member, friend us on Facebook, pay attention to what we do, because consistently in the last hundred years in the United States, the League is the voice of nonpartisan education to the community, especially in local lives. Thank you for coming.